Everyone.
Recording in progress.
We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside as well as on our website. Please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is also an automatic external defibrillator that is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. We're going to begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners and take a couple of items and then we'll recess and go back to the regularly ordered agenda. So with that, could we do a roll call for Board of Commissioners?
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Yes. And the first we're going to do is a presentation and a presentation on the Project Intentional, a Douglas County-based nonprofit serving families in need. And Sasha, and I can't remember your last name, is here to talk about her project and our partnering with the project through some Douglas County departments. So, good morning Sasha.
Good morning. My name is Sasha Burscheid and I am an alcoholic. So to be on this side and coming to the courtroom and being sober nine years now is a huge feat because I remember back in my day, coming down here did not mean coming to present to all of you. So I was definitely wagging my tail while I was driving down here, giving myself hugs and pats and thinking, "Good job Sasha, keep going." So I am here to talk to you about my passion project called Project Intentional, Inc. This nonprofit came out of nowhere and has taken Omaha and my family by storm. In December of 2019, I was sitting in the nursery with my two children at that time, and I remember the positions that I was holding them. At that time, I had my daughter who was 18 months old and she was here. She had not yet been diagnosed with level three autism. And I had my son in this arm right here cradling him, and he was three months old. So I was postpartum, hormonal, depressed, sleep deprived, every single thing that a new mom and a new mom with a special needs child was going through. And I, my husband walked in and he said, "Hey Sasha, what do you want for Christmas?" And in that moment, life left me because I thought to myself, "How do single moms do this?" I'm a full-time employee for LinkedIn. My husband and I own Relax Pools. I have incredible benefits through the company that I work for. My mother still is alive. I have two sisters. My support network is outrageous and beautiful. And I really don't know how single moms do this, let alone single moms with children with special needs. So in that moment, I decided I want to adopt a mom this holiday season. So I took to our favorite, Facebook, and I posted on a group that no longer exists and I just said, "Hey, I'd like to adopt one of you. Let me know if there's anything that you guys are interested in." Because one of the things that I was taken aback by was that I didn't have a single need or want. Like, what, how fortunate am I? So I got over, well, close to 100 responses on that one post. Out of those responses, basically all of them needed socks, underwear, hygiene products. And I'm like, "No ladies, I said like Legos and Barbies and cars and like holiday items." And that's not the case. These individuals were all asking for basic needs that you and I take for granted every single day. I'm sure that this morning when you brushed your teeth or you applied deodorant, it just came second nature to you. Some of these individuals that I help in our community have to pick between paying their electric bill or being able to afford a clean and hygienic menstrual cycle. So I was able to leverage my network as well as the Facebook group itself. And we got 80 mothers adopted that year. Well, January rolled around and I went into existential crisis mode thinking, "Well, what happens to all these moms that we just loved on? Like, who's going to help them next?" And my sister said, "Well, I don't know, but like, if you're willing to put your boots on the ground," she's a mega genius, "I am willing to do all the legal work for you and apply so that this could become a 501(c)(3) nonprofit." So on February 4th of 2020, Project Intentional did become a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. Our mission is to intentionally restore dignity in women and families, one project at a time. So I'm going to talk to you about the two projects that we're working on. The number one that is what you guys are all supporting me on this holiday season is called the, it's a big name, hold tight, Winter Wonderland Emporium Holiday Store. It's a big name because it's a big event. This holiday season, we are adopting 1,500 caregivers at Baxter Arena, yeah, 1,500, at Baxter Arena on December 10th. Now, first year we adopted 80, that was the social media post. Second year, COVID happened, so we didn't get to bring our vision to fruition. We adopted 38, then 485, then 612. And then this list, last year, we've been challenged by the community to see how big can we make it? And I know that we can make it bigger than this year, so we're doing 1,500. The way that it works is that we invite over 90 other nonprofits, professional and personal resources. It's one thing to give a hand out, it's another to give a hand up. I feel like it would be a disservice to our community to simply go out there and give out toys. What if we could create a change in every single one of these individuals who comes and attends this event? Whether it be that they do an on-the-spot job interview. Last year, we had 48 persons interview. At this one company, it was the first time that we tested it out. Out of those 48 women, eight of them got hired. Out of those eight women, seven of them kept the job. Out of those seven women, two of them became CNAs. This is a game changer. So we gave them a bingo card with this year, because of feedback, six boxes. So we simply request that they visit six of the 90 different booths that are set up. After they have gone through all of the booths, they are able to go shopping for free. Every registered child will receive a brand-new pack of socks and a brand-new toy. Additionally, the caregiver will receive one caregiver gift and three hygiene items. Last year, we did change the name from Moms in Need to Caregivers because we've had grandpas, we've had uncles, we've had older sisters. And last year, when I was talking to a dad who was actually at the event for about four hours, and I said, "Hey, what is it that I can do to improve this?" And he said, "This is an incredible event. This is outstanding. I love the resources, but most of them are geared towards women." I'm a single dad Sasha, and I'm struggling too. And so that's why we changed it to Caregivers to be inclusive of everyone, including foster parents, because foster parents are really stepping up to help those little people in our community. So additionally, we weren't only doing menstrual products. Because this individual really stood out to me, we decided to change it from just menstrual products to hygiene products. I let the individuals know that I would let them know what resources were in Omaha as far as hygiene products go. And it was pretty difficult to come by. So that's our second project. So our first project is the Winter Wonderland Emporium Holiday Store, which is what all the toy donations are going towards. The second project that we have is called Hope Lockers. So we are installing Hope Lockers throughout the city of Omaha right now. We have eight of them out there. They're filled with all types of hygiene products, from menstrual products to deodorants for all sexes, all ages to come. And take for free, what we, our slogan is just take what you need, leave what you don't. And those are our two initiatives that we're working on. Thank you so much for this opportunity today. It really means a lot to me. For anything or any additional questions that you have, please visit our website. You can donate there monetarily. Our biggest ask is just to keep us in your prayers. This is going to be a pretty big task to take on. We're all just a bunch of working moms. All of us are volunteers. None of us, then 501(c)(3) doesn't have any employees whatsoever. Every dollar that we raise goes directly right back out to the city of Omaha. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you Sasha. I want to thank our Information Director Leah Baez for putting us in touch with you and being able to again have some county departments that are going to partner with you this year on this project. And that is amazing. And one thing she didn't say is that she was actually on the Kelly Clarkson Show. And because she has made such an impact as an individual on what you've done with this project and the purpose behind it is extraordinary. So again, we're excited to partner with you and for you to be here and stay strong, continue to stay strong, and we'll see our donations go to good use this winter. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'm going to, I have to ask, and I should have asked this before, but the other presentation, this dog for the attorney, did we not, that was last week?
Tracy, your county attorney's office, if I may. No, we do have another presentation for you. Won't be available till about 9:50. So if we could just revisit it when you come back to Board of Commissioners. But we will be bringing the actual facility dog that we have received to meet the board and give a presentation on that specific dog. She is here. Her name is Laramie.
Okay. Well, I'm going to move up to a recognition and proclamation. We have one, and there's quite a few people. If you all want to move down to the front and maybe just kind of wrap around the podium stand. Brad, you stand in the middle of the podium and then everybody can stand behind and on the side of you. And we'll have, Mike, do you want to read the resolution? Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a resolution from the Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska. Whereas Douglas County Youth Center, DCYC Superintendent Brad Alexander began his employment with Douglas County on September 25th, 1996. And whereas during his tenure as superintendent, Brad Alexander has demonstrated great leadership and tremendous dedication to his staff and to the youth who have been detained at DCYC. And whereas Brad Alexander has operated the DCYC in a manner that keeps his staff and youth detainees safe, and his priority has always been to improve the lives of the youth who have resided there. And whereas there have been numerous youth who have subsequently contacted Brad Alexander to express their gratitude for how they were treated by the DCYC staff and the positive impact it had on their lives. And whereas Brad Alexander has earned the utmost respect from his peers in the juvenile justice community across the nation. And whereas Brad Alexander has also served on the Nebraska Jail Standards Board for many years to ensure that all juvenile detention facilities in the state of Nebraska are operated in a safe and effective manner. And whereas Brad Alexander has announced his retirement from Douglas County, but will continue to serve, continue his service to at-risk youth as the new director of the Lancaster County Youth Services Center. Now, therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby expresses its sincere gratitude to Brad Alexander for his 27 years of dedicated and valuable service to Douglas County and further wishes Brad the very best in his new role with Lancaster County. Dated the 7th day of November, 2023, signed by Chairwoman Mary Ann Borgeson.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Brad, I don't know what to say other than happy for you and sad for us. You have done a magnificent job and a crucial service that we provide to young people in Douglas County. Nobody has ever done this better than you. And I'm envious of Lancaster County getting your services, particularly at this point, as you know and have worked on over the last few years regarding the changes at the youth center that are about to happen. But this has been, as a public servant, a delight working with you over the years. I've always found you to be the most dedicated, informed, and open and hands-on director that you could possibly be. I know that you've been nationally recognized as, you know, one of the best youth center directors in the United States, and rightfully so. We will have someone to succeed you, but no one can replace you.
I appreciate it.
And I just want to say, I hope that we have a relationship going forward
Yes, sir.
as rich and rewarding as the one that we've had. I really appreciate how in the last few years, you have done a great job under trying circumstances and have provided the best possible services with resources at your disposal to the children that you're responsible for. Douglas County has really been lucky to have you for as long as we have. All good things must end. But I want you to know that we will always remember and value your tenure. And I think that, you know, different organizations have different cultures. You're leaving behind in place a lot of people over there who I think have been trained and deployed and supervised and encouraged by you. And that shows in the staff that you have and the people that are going to be coming after you. If there is a bright side to this, and it's really a bittersweet occasion for us, it is that, that you've done a super job of recruiting, retaining first-class people. Your staff is the best in the state.
My question.
And I know that you've struggled with the resources at your disposal, but you've really done a magnificent job. And the children of Douglas County that have come through the youth center over the years, I think have been very, very lucky to have you as a mentor really, whose organization has done great work in getting these kids who have frankly problems or they wouldn't be in the youth center, back on the right path. And I know that you've done all that you can. We wish that you were going to be with us longer, but I know that you're going to do a great job in Lancaster County. I just hope that we can continue our productive working relationship because I rely on your sage advice and don't know anybody in this state who's better informed and has their heart in the right place when it comes to this kind of work. I know this wasn't an easy decision for you and
One minute.
That speaks to your character as well because from a family point of view, and we've had this discussion, this was a little bit of a no-brainer. This made a lot of sense for you and your lovely family. It's just tough for us. And you put that really upfront in your decision process, and I know that was hard for you. And that's really, as I said, speaks to your character and your dedication. You're a first-class public servant, and we don't see your kind very often. I am just grateful to have had the opportunity to have worked with you for as many years as we have. And I wish you and your family all the best going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brad, we only got to work together two years, but I thoroughly enjoyed those two years working with you. And what I specifically mean by that is that, you know, you always, you have that right balance of like a calm demeanor and leading with like a steady hand and approach, but you also bring that expertise, that strong competency, that passion for the field that you're in, and always looking at, you know, best practices, national practices. What are other jurisdictions doing nationally? How do we compare to that? And what can we learn from them? While also looking at the local context of what's right for us and finding some kind of middle ground between those two things. And so, you know, you were always somebody that was open to open conversations about how to handle different situations. You provided, like Jim said, sage feedback while also being willing to take feedback and, you know, trying to work on solutions together, right? As many of the things before us are complicated, but again, you always had that steady leadership and that approach that I really admire, a humble approach, but also a very professional approach. So thank you for 27 years, which is, in any career, that is a long time. And so we were lucky to have you for such a long tenure. We know that the different jurisdictions in Nebraska and the whole juvenile justice, you know, ecosystem in our state, you know, they affect each other to an extent, and we are partners.
Yes.
And so I look forward to having you as a strong partner in Lancaster County. So we will be in touch for sure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your service, Brad.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Morgan?
Well, first, I want to thank your family and all the people that have joined you here today. I think Commissioner Garcia and Commissioner Kavanaugh said it well, and certainly the other commissioners feel the same way. And Mike Friend did an excellent job with the resolution. You will be missed. I really thank you for all your courtesy you've always shown to me when I've come out there for lunch or to visit your facility and try to set up a ping-pong game and so on. And
We'll get that done.
I just know it was a very difficult decision for you, and it's probably still going through your mind, especially with all these kind words. But for positive, you honestly will be missed. You're a class guy. And I thank you very, very much for your service and your family for letting you serve because you had many challenges, and I'm certain some nights where you stayed awake trying to figure out how to resolve a certain part of what was going on. And just thank you. And take care and best of health and enjoy your new role. You'll do a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Boyle?
So, and I really love what Commissioner Morgan just said about family. And so, family is really critical in this. And having grown up in a political family, I can tell you that I know what it's like to try to support someone who seems to be kind of the center point of attention a lot of times and has its ups and downs. With that, I have an up. When I was running for office, I had the advantage, the unfair advantage of having my dad, who had connections, he's a great connector. And among other things, when he was kind of showing me the ropes, he said, "I gotta have you meet this guy who runs DCYC." So one of the first things I did was with dad was, he kept setting it up and my schedule gets weird, but finally I was able to go to DCYC and see the facility and meet with Brad and his team and really see how things were done. And I think as someone who's not in the political realm or the corrections realm or juvenile setting, it was eye-opening for me. And just to see how everything was done, it really impressed me. I think what you heard from my colleagues and what we all know is that, the position you're in, Brad, it does take a lot of strength. There's a lot of discipline there. You're operationally strong. At the same time, the thing that my dad always taught me, it's the intangible. What you have brought to the DCYC was your sensitivity and your good heart. And you can't just put that on a job application. And that is what is going to be missed the most. So we appreciate everything that you've done for the kids in this community.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Friend?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Brad, I don't know why you'd remember this. I got a chance to meet you in 2009 when I worked for the state, the Office of Violence Prevention, which was a department within the Crime Commission. And we never really crossed paths that often, but over the last three years, we have. And I didn't know you that well then, but I've gotten to know you pretty well in the last three years. And I appreciate, if I had to oversimplify it, I appreciate two things. One, Brad, if I asked, I would hope that any of us, if we asked for a certain type of information, you did it with candor and it was pretty clear. I appreciate that. I mean, and it is a tough job. We've outlined that. I don't know how a person could do that for 27 years. I appreciate that. And you're going to keep doing it, and I appreciate that too. What I mostly appreciate, and this sounds a little bit dramatic, is your friendship. You can't have enough friends. You just can't. And I appreciate that. And so, you might end up being a pallbearer at my I, you could be that high on the list. Brad, I
I'll carry you anywhere, Mike.
What's so funny? Brad, I, well, I'm sick, but not, um, Brad, I appreciate that. I appreciate the friendship and I appreciate the straightforward approach that you take to business and deal with the youth. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Patrick?
Patrick Bloomingdale, County Administrator. So I've known Brad since he started, when I was in the county attorney's office and worked here in administration and for the last 11 years as county administrator. I just wanted to thank Brad for your leadership. You know, there's been some good times and there's been some really hard times. There was times when you had over 200 youth in that facility. You've had some kids in there that committed some pretty serious crimes and knew that they were gonna likely go upstream and didn't feel like they had a lot to lose. And so you dealt with some real challenges. But I rarely got calls in the middle of the night or really at any time about assault staff, kids assaulting staff. or really at any time about assaults, staff, kids assaulting staff. And I think it's because your staff has developed relationships with those youth, and there's a level of respect there, and that comes from your leadership. And you've made my job so much easier because you're a department director who I don't have to worry about. I know that that facility is being run in such an effective manner. So, it is a tremendous loss, but as I've told you, and I know it was a hard decision, that this is an opportunity for a new challenge, a fresh start. I know that you love Douglas County, and that was a real difficult decision to leave. But on the other side of it is, this is an opportunity to create another legacy. I mean, the legacy you're leaving here is tremendous, but now you have an opportunity to leave another legacy and build new relationships with your staff and have a positive effect on kids in Lancaster County. So, again, I just wanted to thank you for all your years of tremendous leadership, and I wish you the best in Lancaster. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
Is there a spokesperson that would like to say a few words from the Youth Center?
Well, first off, I'm Mark LaFlore. We've met once or twice. Thanks for recognizing Brad. He has been a tremendous, tremendous superintendent and really just has worked so well with encouraging the staff and making sure that the young people are taken care of. When I was interviewed with Brad some 14, 15 years ago, one of the things he said to me in the interview that kind of stuck with me, he said, "You know, if you put the kids first, you don't have to apologize for things." And absolutely, that's the case. When young people feel that they're first and that they're being considered, it really does make a good environment for them. And I just want to share one particular letter that we received. We received several, but this one kind of stuck out and it kind of paints a good picture of what Brad has done at the Youth Center. Dear DCYC staff, I am writing to let everyone know, and this is from a youth at the Youth Center, of course, to let everyone know that I'm doing good now that I'm finally home. I have been planning stuff out for my future. I have decided that I will attend high school at Omaha Burke and wrap up my senior year. It's been taking a bit to transition back home. The first night I got back home, I only slept for two hours. It just felt weird to be back, but eventually, I'll get over this transition. It was pretty hard for me in the first four months, for the four months I've been in the Youth Center. Being away from all my loved ones, that was without a doubt the toughest thing I had to go through. However, the part that made things easier for me was not only for me, but for my friends and family was all of you guys. For all of you that knew me, just know that all of you are my greatest friends. I know that your job isn't the easiest or the greatest thing to do, but despite that, you guys have opened your hearts to me and were willing to show me how capable and important it was for me to succeed. Without you guys, I honestly wouldn't have been able to get through my tough four months on this long journey. I appreciate all of you guys for being my friends. God bless. Take care and your friend. P.S. I'm inviting everyone who wants to go to my graduation. It's set for next year. And we received several letters and calls back and children coming back to visit. And the environment at the Youth Center is crucial to be receiving for young people. And Brad has done that from the beginning. My first day there, we had 167 youth, and you know, now we're down to half that. But the blessing was, he wanted to make sure every one of them were taken care of. And that's the type of leadership that everyone else saw and followed, and it's what made the Youth Center such a wonderful place to work. And I'd like to... Commissioner, please.
Commissioner Morgan?
Don't say the name, but I think that youth's name might be Nick that you just read the letter on.
It might be.
Because I've had someone that talked to me, the family, about that and how much he felt love being at the Youth Center. And that's a true story. I even talked to a couple of your people around me knows that the family had called me and just how he felt the love from the Youth Center. That's a true story.
It starts from the top.
He is connected with Burke High School.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And with that, Brad, do you want to say a few words?
Yes, I do. I do. Thank you for this opportunity. So, when you're filling out retirement paperwork, you fill out this form, and there's a box, and it says, "Do you want to be recognized by the county board?" I've never been that much into personal recognition. So, I checked no. And then I started to think about it a little bit, and I was like, you know, I care so much about the people that I work with. Good Lord, I'm sorry. My family. And so, it was important to me to be here today just to recognize them. And I'm so lucky. You've got Leslie here, my oldest. Jack, he must love me if I finally got him out of Lincoln for a day. My wife Lori, and then Megan. And fun fact about Megan, I actually accepted this position while Lori and I were in the delivery room waiting for Megan to show up. And I had a beeper at that time, so that kind of tells you anything. But it's just such a blessing to have such a wonderful support system. You know, the commissioners that spoke, yeah, trust me, this has been probably one of the most difficult decisions I've ever made. And then you have an opportunity to speak with your family. And at the end of the day, just like they do, and I was told, "Do what's going to make you happy." And that's just, I'm lucky to have that. And I'm still not convinced I've done that. And then my work family back here, that's, I mean, 27 years, it's been a true joy to show up to work with the people that I work with. And 100% people, I mean, that's the hardest thing in the... Throughout this whole process, in terms of trying to make a decision, it's, that's what's made this so difficult. We have such a wonderful team at the Youth Center. And, you know, publicly, there's some commercials out there. And, you know, turn the TV off when you see those commercials, seriously. This group of people back here, you know, we go to work every day. And our job, and we tell people this, and this is our mindset. We keep it really, really simple. You know, we know how the Youth Center is run. I mean, we're there every day. We know. And if our kid or a young person that we were, that we care about, that we love, shows up at the Youth Center knowing everything we know about the Youth Center, we go to bed at night going, "I wish they weren't there, but dang it, I know they're going to be safe. I know they're going to be well taken care of, and I trust the people that are going to be taking care of them." And we've done that. And I can't remember which commissioner mentioned putting together a really, really good staff, but that's, we've done that. I mean, it's, we were recognized as the best facility in the state of Nebraska a few years back. That's for adult or juvenile facilities. And that's by the people that do our inspections, our regulatory agency. They know all the facilities better than anyone. And I never accepted that as a recognition of myself. I mean, it was the people that are actually doing the work. And so, today is not a, to me, it's not a goodbye, because I know I've got friendships that are going to go long past today. But just publicly, thank you all so much.
All right. With that, could I please have the vote?
Oh, one more thing. Jim and Kim Weeks, my neighbors. They've served as therapy for me on several occasions, and I appreciate them being here.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And then if you want to come up around, and we'll give you the resolution?
Hello. Nice to meet you, and I know you. Hello.
Thank you.
Cutting out school today?
Yeah, a little bit.
All right. I'll call your professors.
Can you guys kind of wrap around the front here? Because there's so many of us. And then Marcos, and Leah's not here. Oh, you got it. Okay. Thank you. Come on. Come on. And your neighbors. Come on. Come on.
Jump on in there.
You guys squeeze, probably.
All right. I need you guys in just a little more. All right. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Do I have a motion to recess from the Board of Commissioners and enter into the Douglas County Board of Equalization?
Motion recessed by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Passes seven to zero.
And then could we have a roll call for the Board of Equalization, please?
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Yes. Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 31st, 2023. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments?
Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Kavanaugh is currently absent.
Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Excuse me.
Good morning.
Morning.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I want to continue on something that needs to be continued and there needs to be discussions, presentations on, particularly in view of Veterans Day just around the corner. The difference between Islam and Christianity needs to be discussed. If it is not, and if we don't come out of our Amerophobia that was presented a few weeks back by calling me Islamophobic, then we're really dishonoring all of the veterans that gave their lives and are still serving. So, I want to present something to you today to help pull you out of the Board of Equalization, out of their Amerophobia. Some well-known authors of books in regards to Islam. I'm not talking about Muslim people. Muslim people are really Arabs. Islam is a political system.
Larry, this really has nothing to do with Board of Equalization.
Yes, it does, because this gentleman called me Islamophobic for what I said.
So, I'm going to cut you off.
You're out of order.
I know. Thank you. You always think that, but thank you. Okay. Thank you, Larry. Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Is there anyone else?
The Constitution says you're out of order.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. Resolutions D, E, F, G, H, and I. There is no need for executive session, so this can include adjournment. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any further questions or comments?
Motion passes seven to zero.
Now, we'll move back in. Do we have a motion to go back into the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners? And this can include our roll call, if you want to just do it by voice.
Sure.
Is there a motion to reconvene and go into Board of Commissioners? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. And then this also includes our roll call.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 31st, 2023. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, November 14th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Any further questions or comments?
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is our consent agenda. Items A through... A through I. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments?
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we'll move to committee. Wait a minute. Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Good morning.
Good morning. Kenneth Anderson, 8443 Craig Avenue, Irvington. Wish to talk about election machines down in Dallas County, Texas, how they affect us up here or my vote up here. Last November, Dallas County machines were noticed in one particular jurisdiction, election jurisdiction, to be active after or upon the polls closing, the polling places closing. And you can see those videos that were recorded, they're showing the screens of the ESNS equipment. If you go to Rumble, I think YouTube doesn't allow election issues to be discussed like that. If you go to Rumble, you can put in a search string called Dallas Polls, P-O-L-L-S, closing, election. If you put that into Rumble, you'll see quite a number of these videos. The source is one video. It's spread out over quite a number of Rumble channels. But the way that affects us up here is if, and as was the case down there, those were some federal positions on the ballot down there in sending people to Washington, DC. And those are affecting us here, because we also send people to that governing body in Washington, DC. This coming election will also include the president. And if that kind of thing happens down there in Dallas on ESNS equipment, okay? ESNS equipment is critical here. And if those machines down there process voters for the day when they never showed up, but as they were closing, you'll see that. That affects us up here. And I haven't voted yet in Douglas County. So this coming election, in a year from now, will be my first general election, we'll say, voting in Douglas County for quite a long time. And if that happens down there, I'll consider it affecting my vote. You know, so far, that's a hypothetical situation. But I would file a notice of tort claim at that time. And so you can consider this threat of litigation, although, I can't do that right now. But that entitles you, I would think, to go into closed session and talk this matter over. According to state law, the threat of litigation entitles you to go into closed session and talk the matter over. I'm encouraging you to watch those Rumble videos, or one of them. Pick the longest one, I'd say, so you get the full scenario going on down there. That ESNS equipment processed voters after the polls close. Might have one more thing to mention here. I think that covers it. Thank you. Ken Anderson. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda?
Nicole Leclair, our Omaha. I just want to speak about last week and also bring up again the idea of having evening meetings. Most of the meeting last week was the debate about the two topics of Juvenile Justice Center and the mental health facility that went through despite numerous citizens up here speaking, all of us representing hundreds, if not thousands of people. And I just wanted to read a little bit from other people, so you know, I'm not just saying that, but Mary Morinelli's letter to the editor, "County Board in Action. Our Douglas County Board has once again found us a solution to the capacity issues with our youth detention centers, and the cost will be a mere $2.5 million more annually from our property tax dollars. That brand-new, but too small and still vacant 27 million downtown youth detention center was paid for by property tax increase approved by our county board years ago when they agreed to build it. Many who are quite knowledgeable about the actual needs surrounding the youth detention issues in the county oppose the idea of the new downtown center due to its size, but most of the county board members thought they knew best how to spend our tax dollars. Jim Kavanaugh has been the only board member to speak out against this folly since the beginning. Thank you, Jim. And even though he's been right all along, his fellow board members keep voting to spend more and more of our tax dollars. The next project this board has taken on is the development of a new mental health treatment unit for the Douglas County Correctional Center. Can we really trust this group to make wise fiscal decisions? I'll remind you that these county board members are the same individuals that make up the County Board of Equalization, which has the power and authority to review our property valuations. I'm sure most on the county board hope you all forget how well they spent our money in the past when they are up for election again. Please don't. I also received an email from Sharon Martin, who came numerous times to the meeting. She cannot be here today. I'm sending you the document that I researched from this Chin study. She's one of the few of us that read that whole study that states the fact that they used the document to say they had done a research study. By the way, that study costs $189,000. To justify their decisions, but never use the actual findings that did not support the decisions that were made, there are warnings against what they were doing regardless of the expert recommendations and warnings, their total disregard for Jim's research-based solutions, and the illicit use of COVID funds that undermine the silent Somali community that tried to report how the committee's decision had no regard for the needs and concerns of dedicated, hard-working immigrants and who deserve the support they should have been given. These people are concerned with diversity, equity, and inclusion. Their unfounded decisions have hurt the very groups they used to I'm going to skip that. Brad Alexander and his staff were not consulted, even though they had actual data to support authentic research and real-world expertise. And I just, I want to submit that. But I just want to say, last week's meeting was old school. It was four hours, you know, and it was mostly debating those topics. And the fact that we all came up here and spoke and you voted the way you did speaks volumes. And for Commissioner Rogers to say they never intended to close 42nd Street, I've been coming for five years. That's not what was said. So that's completely shocking to hear that now. And to quote unquote, "You can't build your way out of it. You absolutely can't build your way out of it." I went to meetings where I heard, "The building is the program. The building is the program."
One minute.
Also, just wondering about the $5 million that have been promised for the programs and where they are. I'm trying to think of what else I wanted to say. I just really appreciate Brad and his team for most of these five years for showing up, who are with the kids. My mom's going to get up in a minute and talk about her experience going there. And I don't know who's going to replace him, and I don't think you can with his experience. And I fear what is the future? Because of Dr. Aubie Carbaugh with DADA, I mean, Brad is with the kids. So I'm very sorry for all of you to lose him. And I don't know all his decision-making, but in some ways, I feel like all this has made it maybe easier for him to leave, you know? So, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda?
Hi, my name is Ford Momarts, Central Park Tower, 1511 Farnham. And I have three things that I would like to mention in no particular order. You folks all know as well as I do that more people, that a whole bunch of people, almost a county's worth, would like to see fewer things done in executive session. And despite what somebody tells you should be done in executive session, we have a right to know what you're doing about our elections. And also, you probably know as well as I do that elections is not one of the provisions under the Nebraska Open Meetings Law that permits them to go into executive session. The second thing that, I noticed it a while ago, but I haven't really had a chance to speak to it, is since you changed over to inaudible voting, again, that's not really fair to the citizens. We should be able to hear your convictions, yes or no, or pass. Whatever you are voting, instead of having to wait until Dan here releases the information, I would like to see you, and I know I'm not the only one, would like to see you go back to voicing your votes. And the third point that I wanted to make, I'm sorry, my brain, my memory doesn't work as well since I got hit by that car. But, oh, I have been in touch, the issue that you hear me most on is the Satan Francis House. I've been in touch with our congressional representative and his office, and I find it highly disappointing that as our representative in Congress, he has no interest in looking into misdirection of government funds. That so-called shelter is diverting federal money to things for which the money was not given, and he has no interest in looking into it. I thought that was one of the primary facets of his job. But I hope that you are taking more to heart the testimonies I've given about the problems there and their needing to be addressed. Frankly, I would recommend that you shut down that place and find somebody who cares about the inmates to take it over. Maybe Catholic Charities, or the Society of St. Vincent de Paul, or something like that. But somebody who actually cares and will do a good job and won't staff it with all but one ex-convict on their staff. That's, that's the total number of ex-convicts that are staff over at the Satan Francis House, one. And of course, they still operate the same way that got them convicted in the first place. But those are the three points. Actually, those are four points that I made, but thank you for your time and your consideration. I know you guys have a tough job to do.
One minute.
Pardon?
Just one minute.
Okay. The silent voting, or electronic voting, whatever you call it, also works against being open and held accountable. I don't know how many of you have ever visited the legislature in Lincoln. They've got a huge board up there, and they do the same kind of electric voting you do, but theirs is visible. You can just look at it and see how they're voting. Just a suggestion to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning. Norma Leclair, our Omaha. Brad gave good detailed reports. He talked about numbers in detention, he gave breakdowns of types of crime, gave percentages of the majority and minority crimes and the numbers incarcerated. He was a great superintendent. And as a citizen, it was very informative to see what direction our town is taking. And it was pointed out very quickly with those numbers that probably this new kid's jail would never accommodate the numbers that he was talking about. I feel like we need those numbers more than ever, every month, and I think that we should even have it in all the media. When children are arrested and have done violent things, I think the public deserves to know where those percentages stand. And I think you would hear even more from the public as a result of that. Commissioner Rogers, last week, said that we didn't have a juvenile crime problem, but it's very hard to accept that from just one commissioner with no numbers. You can deny it better if you can show the numbers. I had a number of things written down here. Brad was very professional, and when we went, about seven citizens requested a tour of his jail, and I think you don't like that term, but when we toured that on 42nd Street in 2018, I came back and reported, this facility, the biggest thing going for it in any place in the country, is the space that it had and the potential that it had to go back to areas that were closed off because they were no longer needed, but it was there for the potential. And a while back, you were talking about co-located mental health for the public. You were going to put the criminal and the public co-located, but I was told you couldn't co-locate the children. But it sounds like that would even be more feasible in the area that you have there. So just some things to think about. Appreciate your time.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to our Come on, who's up? All right, we're moving on.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, along the same lines. In addition to what I sent in an email for testimony today, I'd like to remind you that you took a note of the flag of the United States and One Nation under God, our God, Christian God, and the republic, the republic that has a shared government, a shared concept called federalism. The federal government and the local state and local government shares the responsibility for governing this unique constitutional republic. I have a document that wants to re-educate you about that. It includes words from Mr. Robert Borer and some other rather well-known people about the concept of federalism and the concept of our federal republic, our constitutional, unique, multi-faceted republic, unlike any other republic in history. And the fact that they never said that we were a democracy, so please don't use the word. That's one document. And the other document is to back up my statements about the difference between Christianity and Islam. We do not worship the same God. That is a political system. The Muslim people are a different matter. They are Arabs. They are not a race. Get that straight. A very well-documented history of the differences between Islam and Christianity. And my last topic is on the elections, so if you'll cut me off. One of these days, you will have a presentation in these chambers on the election, the stolen election, because our state officials are not owning up to what happened. Anybody that's got any common sense knows that a computer and machines and people that put programs into the machines can alter that stuff. Mr. Borer has tried to get the facts, tried to request the facts, the documents, and he's been denied. That's unconstitutional. Now, last Sunday night, 60 Minutes, I believe, opened up a can of worms for all of you because they talked about it. They had a gentleman that was rather well-informed about what actually did happen. I think you should all watch that and then invite us to have a presentation. A presentation by we, the people, on this side, controlling the presentation, the 10 minutes total, and the government people on that side, the opponents, who only get to talk once for five minutes if we let them, but we can call them back. We have lost our republic. Yesterday, there was the beginning of what I think is a very unconstitutional trial of who is probably the real President of the United States. This was a trial not by jury, not with a jury. You get that? Have you read your Constitution? Is that justice? I don't think so. I think that's unconstitutional. But the whole country is bowing into the media that says, "Oh, the New York Attorney General is a wonderful person, she's right. Oh, the judge is right." But judges are sitting up there But judges are sitting up there pulling an unconstitutional act from a number of standpoints. You should be going to the state legislature and protesting that for us, lobbying for us about those issues. America is under assault. And we're being assaulted by the media again, making us the bad guys. People like this, the bad guys. People that defend America versus Islam, the bad guys. Christians, the bad guys. You better wake up, folks, because the end is coming. Mark Levin talks about the cultural Marxism that is going on in this country, and that's quite true, quite apparent even in these chambers. And it's gotta stop. We expect, and I hope Douglas County will lead the effort to restore our constitutional republic.
Time. Thank you, Larry.
I'm sorry, could I talk over the red light?
Next.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Louis T. Menes, 2709 Julie Avenue. I just want to point out that the DCYC director has not been present in these meetings or available for questioning by the Commissioners often throughout the last few years. And that has been a disappointment because I think staff and the public and the Commissioners should be able to speak their minds here in this meeting so you can come to a decision on matters. And then I will argue with you, Madam Chair, about what transpired last week. You were saying that I wanted to talk about an item that was disposed, a resolution that was disposed. And that item was this adopted October 31st. You can see Resolution Number 0568. You were saying that I was talking about this resolution, so I was out of order. However, for for last meeting and the previous meeting, I've been talking about this resolution. Resolution 0267, adopted May 23rd, 2023. And the reason being is because on the operative clause, you say that to initiate the project to construct a mental health treatment unit at the Department of Corrections to include parking structure and/or additional surface parking. So I'm one that wants to know what's the price on that? On the parking? I have here a draft communication to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners from Joseph T. Lorenz, Director of Finance and Budget, dated in May. And it is in reliance of the services provided by Deloitte and Tush. So he has an explanation here as to why you can build a addition to corrections and parking. Says here that the Douglas County received architectural proposal from Carlson West Pavandra Architects of Omaha, Nebraska for building a new mental health treatment unit that would connect to the county jail at 710 South Seventeenth Street and construct an adjacent county-owned parking garage. And it goes on to list expenditures. And it says total project cost, thirty-two, thirty-three, and then thirty-four. Thirty-three here, thirty-three million, and thirty-four million over here. So from what I'm understanding, that now that you have a contract for thirty million to construct this project, that the parking is also included in the thirty million. And I have not received an answer in any way from you guys that the entirety of the project, including contingencies, include or amount to thirty million. And that's also for parking. And why is that important? Because you'll, if, if that's the case, then you have twenty million dollars up in the air. And you're gonna have vultures coming in wanting that money. I think that if you have twenty million, then you should split it among your district. Your districts, if you're not gonna construct a community mental health facility that will supplement the population, that your community mental health department services and the correction services, there's, they're the same population. If you're not gonna use that money for that service, then you need to split the twenty million among the seven Commissioners. And that each of you will then decide where the millions of dollars are going, are gonna go to. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda? All right. Seeing none, we will move to our other presentation, which is the introduction of the Douglas County's newly placed facility dog.
Good morning. Don Klein, Douglas County Attorney. And I want to introduce to you today Laramie, our new facility dog that we just got here from K9 Companions on this weekend. And we're very privileged to have her. She's gonna be an amazing resource for the people of Douglas County. And so I'll let John answer any questions you might have about background if you have any, but Laramie's here and she's, she's working right now, so.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. John Brazda, Director of the Victim Assistance Unit for the Douglas County Attorney's Office. I present to you our newest employee and facility dog, Laramie. Laramie's a two-year-old mixed Golden and Lab Retriever. She, actually, she spent her first day at work yesterday on her birthday. She just turned two years old yesterday, so.
I can hardly hear either one of these gentlemen. If they could adjust some mics.
Okay, thank you.
Better?
Go ahead.
It's, it's a privilege to, to have her. We went through an intense week of training and acclimating to each other. She's a phenomenal animal, super intelligent, knows over thirty-eight commands, highly disciplined, highly structured, very focused. As you could tell, she's, she's doing exactly what she's trained to do. But it's, it's gonna be a privilege to provide this service to our citizens in Douglas County in the terms of assisting and supporting crime victims in our, in our county. So I'll open it up to any, any questions you guys might have of me. Unfortunately, she's, she's not gonna speak, so.
Commissioner Boyle?
Just give an example for us on how, how she will be utilized.
Yes. So early on in the, in the introduction process, when we identify a crime victim, myself and our advocates reach out to crime victims to provide support and encouragement to to know, to, to inform them of their victims' rights and that introduction process. In that process now, we'll ask crime victims if they're, how they feel about dogs, if they have any allergies. And then we can introduce them to, to them when we have our face-to-face visits. You know, the science behind it is, is that animals have a calming effect on, on some human beings. And I could tell you from, from experience that she does have that, that effect, especially on me. So she's gonna be a huge icebreaker, especially with children who, who have already been victimized by their perpetrator. And then now they're being introduced to a bunch of strange human beings, you know, adults that may be very intimidating and ask a series of personal questions about their story. And so to have her in the room, being pet by a child, we know that they're more apt to, to be more relaxed and to share their story. And if they're more comfortable, hopefully the process is a little bit easier on them.
Does this, this dog's demeanor, is it pretty much like this most of the time then, when, and then what if, when, when, when she's off duty? Or does she do that?
So yeah, she, she, like I said, she knows over thirty-eight commands. She's not gonna to elicit a behavior without a command that precedes it. So she's been given a, a command to stay down there and will stay down there until otherwise instructed. So she could do a wide variety of things. She could, you know, she'll sit and she'll, she'll shake, she'll do many different things. She'll pick up objects and bring them to you. But when she's off duty, she's a normal dog. But she's just a big, lovable, cuddly animal that loves that affection. That's one of her greatest attributes.
How did you get lucky enough to have her hang out with you?
So I have the, the fortunate opportunity of living with another service animal. My wife, Jean Brazda, is the Chief of Staff for the Sarpy County Attorney's Office and a successor handler, meaning she's now on her second facility dog. So I've been able to witness on a, on a daily nightly basis the abilities of these animals. So approximately a year ago, I brought this concept to, to Don Klein and we discussed it. Talking about innovative ways to, to provide additional services to, to our crime victims. And he loved the idea. That brought on a, a year-long application process where there were several interviews. They, they, the big thing, they match us up with, with a dog, our needs and wants with their abilities. And so when I went to training last week, they had three dogs ideally picked for me. And she happened to be the first one and we hit it off from, from the get-go. Going out there, I didn't know what color, what sex. I knew the K9 Companions breeds their own dogs. So I knew it was gonna be a lab Golden Retriever mix of some sorts. But I didn't, I didn't know a name or anything. So she's been a phenomenal, phenomenal asset.
Thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So John, does, does Laramie like Don?
She loves Don.
Okay. The, okay, that was a... Is, is, is one dog like Laramie enough?
That's a great question, Commissioner. Don and I spoke early on in, in this process that I think once we got this first dog on board and between the crime victims and our attorneys seeing the benefits of what a facility dog can do within the program, that quickly, because of the, the volume of crime that we have, that ultimately, we're probably gonna have to consider getting another one.
Okay.
I'll add to that. Her schedule's much like ours. She's, she's gonna have her own calendar. And we all don't like going back-to-back meetings, right? And so there's all those breaks that we all need. She also needs. She needs a water break. She needs to go use the restroom. Sometimes she's, she might just get sick of people and, and need a little bit extra walking around, but for the most part, she's resilient. She'll do anything that I ask of her.
Just so you know too, they, this dog's value is about fifty thousand dollars, and that was donated by the K9 Companions to us. So we don't have to pay anything for that. They also provide a million-dollar insurance policy. This dog's trained that she's never gonna be anything but docile around people. In fact, John's her protector. Even with other animals, she's not gonna, gonna get in any kind of a fighting mode. So we're very confident that there's gonna be no possible cost to anything from the county's perspective. And then she lives with John. John takes her home every night. And she gets to be a, a normal dog and play and go outside and all those kinds of things that dogs do, so. I don't know if it could have a calming effect on, on the board meetings themselves, maybe, so. Thank you.
Yeah, Don brought up a very good point. Not only are, are these dogs or she here for crime victims, but we also utilize it with, we can utilize it within the office. We all have rough days and sometimes we just need not to see another human, and she's a perfect outlet for that. Just, she allows, she loves that, that attention. So she'll let you pet her all day and thankfully, Teresa's office is pretty close to mine, so she knows, knows how to find me if she needs me.
Okay, Commissioner Rogers?
So I'm just curious, do you have a backup? So what if the dog's needed, you're on vacation?
At this point in time, because of, of the training and the certification that goes in by K9 Companions, I'm her sole trainer. Now, as time goes on and, and we mature together, I'll be able to train others for short tasks, short amount of interactions with other humans, but that's, that's a little bit of a process. Did I answer your question, sir?
No, it just, it just sounds like your schedule is built around the court schedule right now.
Multitasking will be at the highest of importance for me, yeah.
No other questions or comments? Thanks for, what's the name again?
Laramie, like Laramie, Wyoming, Laramie.
Thanks for bringing Laramie. All right, good luck. All right, we'll move to committee, first being the finance, just the budget report as presented and the monthly fee reports from the clerk as presented. Next is human resources. There's the weekly personnel report from civil services presented. Nothing on legislation. There's two action items. The first is a resolution setting calendar year 2023 wage increase for various non-union county employees.
Air.
Oh, I forgot to change that, too. I knew that. It's a resolution for the 2024. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Just for the record, I think there is a percentage attached to this non-union employee increase. If we could get that for the record, that'd be a good thing.
It is five percent for most of the non-union employees. There is a couple of differences on the chief deputies in the resolution that's reflected there.
And do we have a, like a projected dollar amount of what that five percent would actually result in?
I believe the HRO director said it was two and a half million dollars, but she can correct me if that's wrong, because she's here today.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Did you have another? Okay, so this one, there is a motion and a second. No other questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioners, while you're voting, I'll just draw everyone's attention on the east wall here. We do display how each Commissioner votes at the end of each vote. So motion passes seven to zero.
All right, next is the approval of the medical stop-loss proposal renewing coverage with HM Life Insurance Company in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. This has been budgeted. Is there a motion to approve? There's a motion by Commissioner Rush. There's a motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
No, it's on another item on the committees.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yep. I noticed that the premium increase, it looks like it increased significantly. Does, does this go up for RFP? Or do we have more employees that are, that are requiring more medical care? I don't know if anyone can speak to that.
Colleen Frederickson, Human Resources. Yes, we had, it's capped at fifty percent increase. We had a number of high claims last year that we had to dip in, that we had to use the stop-loss insurance. And so in order to defer the increase, we opted for a higher stop-loss, stop-loss limit of six hundred and fifty thousand, which we had still an increase by, I think, about thirty-something percent for that rate.
Can you explain that a little bit for me?
Okay, so the stop-loss, we had a claim that went over six hundred thousand that the county, because we're self-insured, would pay. Any claim over six hundred thousand, the stop-loss insurance covers anything above that. So we had a number, we had, I think, one was over one million dollars. So it saved the county, so that insurance saves the county from putting out all that entire amount for us to pay. The insurance pays it. So it's a reinsurance for it.
Reinsurance, okay. So, but the premium went up a fair amount this year. What, what's the cause of that?
High claims. We had a, a couple of individuals who had very high claims. One was over a million dollars.
Okay, okay.
For the, for the last twelve months.
Okay. Then like I said, it went up, I mean, almost, well, fifty percent.
We are hoping that we have no more claims like that for the next year. There was two significant claims, and I do not believe they will continue on for next year.
Okay. All right, good. And then, this is a silly question, but if we don't have as significant claims next year, would the premium go back down? Or will they?
I don't think anything goes back down.
No, okay.
Unfortunately, no. I wish it would. I mean, they, we can then market it because no one would quote us this year because we have, our rates are so low anyway with the H and M company. So we could, if we do have a good experience, we could look at remarketing if somebody would quote us.
Okay, that was my next question. So, okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
No other questions or comments on that agenda item? There was a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, there is no other item, so I'm not sure.
This is just a notice that the Health and Human Service Committee will hold a hearing a week from today on the fourteenth at 2:00 PM regarding the General Assistance Biennial Guidelines Review, which will be before the full board on the twenty-first, I believe, and a Veterans Day update from our Veterans Affairs Department. So these will be posted publicly, but I wanted to give people our viewing heads-up notice on that.
Next, we do have executive session for litigation, real estate, legal advice, contract and labor negotiations, and security. Also, please note that we will not be meeting on Tuesday, November fourteenth. Our next scheduled Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting will be Tuesday, November twenty-first. Is there a motion to go into executive session for those reasons outlined? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Borgeson. Motion passes five to zero. Commissioners Friend and Kavanaugh are absent. Were adjourned at 12:22 PM.
(Music)